It is 7:17. I can call the needed order. We have five of the seven board members present. Can we stand to pledge allegiance to the flag? My pledge allegiance to the flag, and I say it's clear. To the republic, to the justice, and to the information, and to the law, and to the law. At this time, I will turn it over to the student council for their field trip presentation.
My name is St. Anne Mary. The middle school, high school, student council is planning a field trip to Philadelphia. April 30th to May 1st.
I want to go to Philadelphia. It is rich culture, but important as diverse. It is more a diverse culture you see. Government inside, great gains, understanding of local government. Rich history, discover the area's vast historic background. Educational museums, visit museums that offer educational experiences.
Hello, I'm Taylor, and I'm a Trevor Middle School Student Council in sixth grade. There's diverse attractions and Y for any attraction, attractions. Rockwell access, all of the attractions are easily accessible on foot. There's vibrant neighborhoods. The city and neighborhoods has distinct areas. Like Gold City, known for its house, store, streets, and historical sites. Great House, known for its park and boutiques. And Fisher Mall, which is known for dungeon, dungeon venues and outseats. Exploring all these areas will allow students to experience the city's diverse culture.
Day one, April 30th. At 4:30 in the morning, we will leave the middle high school. It's a four and a half hour drive and only one stop on the way. At 10:00 AM, we'll arrive at the Philadelphia Zoo. From 12:30 to 1:00, we'll have lunch at the zoo. And at 1:30, we'll depart from the zoo and head to Independence Hall.
Hello. Hello, my name is Erin Shaw. I'm in seventh grade and I am the student council vice president. At 2 o'clock to 4:30, we will be at the Independence Hall in Independence National Central Park. We will be visiting the Liberty Bell, Carpenter's Hall, Benny Ross's house, Jacob Grab's house, and the Alfred Alley. From 5:00 to 6:00 PM, we will be having dinner. At 7:30, we'll be participating in a ghost tour. Then finally, we'll take it to the hotel. From 8:00 AM to May 1st, we're going to have breakfast at the hotel. Then from 10:00 to 12:30, we're going to visit the Eastern State Penitentiary. And from 12:30 to 1:00 PM, we're going to visit Rocky Steps.
Hi, my name is Amy Brooks Hoffman, and I'm the secretary on student council. From 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM, we will have lunch at the Reading Terminal. At 2:30 PM, we will leave for the middle school, high school. We'll have dinner on the way home, and we'll arrive at the middle school, high school around 8:00 PM.
Hi, I'm Karen Webster. I'm in sixth grade. Our student council, we have 29 students in middle school student council and 15 students in the high school student council.
Hi, my name is Colani, and I am the sixth grade vice president. And it's the cost of the trip. The cost of the trip would reach $125. The hotel would be $36 per person, which includes the buffet breakfast. The bus would get $100 per person based on the 10:10.
Hello, my name is Quinn Miller. What's included is zoo admission, zoo box lunch, ghost tour, and tour of the Eastern State Penitentiary. Students are responsible for two dinners and one lunch.
Hello, my name is Madeline Clark. I'm in sixth grade. I am the sixth grade middle school student council president.
Hello, I'm Ellen T. Jones. I am in sixth grade student council. And for this, we are going to be talking about the fundraisers we are doing. One we are doing is Little Caesar's Pizza. Another one that we will be doing is Flower Revolves. We will also be doing Berlin t-shirts, sweatshirts, and bleachers seats in spring. We are looking for more ideas.
Actually, it's Bill's hat or crap out. Does anyone have any questions?
My favorite idea is both of them, I hope. We just let people go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna say, you have like a wages to build.
I'll make the motion.
Do you want to mention my friend to approve the trip to Philadelphia? Can I get a second?
One second.
Second by Derek? Okay, Derek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes. Frank?
Yes.
Elaine? Yes. Kim? Yes. And Agnes as well, so it carries six zero. Congratulations and have fun. Okay, the next is a report from the student representative.
Okay, do you hear them now? Good evening, everyone. Here is a rundown of student. I've been long here since last week since I played the teacher at the elementary school, the upper school, and everything. And some of the things that we did with the kid when making soft copies of the learning to code robot cars that the school district brought from the start. The elementary students really enjoyed the activities. On Veterans Day, Mr. Bull and his super troopers organized a great assembly to honor those who served in the different branches of the military. Local veterans and Senator Jake Ashby joined us for breakfast and the celebration had included performances by the banding chorus. The high school student council organized in help, in help of all part-time. Students and staff seemed to enjoy it. Students enjoy open gym for basketball, open pool for swim, and open mat for wrestling. All locals are excited to start the winter season. And I notice that they're able to fix the broken basketball hoop to be playing the gym thanks to building the grounds team. The National Honor Society held this new induction ceremony. Many families intended to support these scholars and were proud of their accomplishments. Our next academic celebration will be the prestigious honor of this reporter one. May we celebrate those who have good dreams?
Thank you. And Bella did provide information based on the policy that we will discuss under AI policy. AI policy. Okay, I will move on to the minutes. We have minutes from October 21st, which is the regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Oh my God. Motion by Kim, a second?
Second.
Second by Elaine. Any discussion or comment? Derek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Frank?
Abstain.
Elaine? Yes. Penny? No, Penny's in here. Kim?
Yes.
And a yes as well. So it's a 5-0 with one abstaining so it passes. And then we have the minutes from the roundtable, which is held on Thursday, November 13th. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make it.
A motion by Frank, second?
Second.
A second by Rebecca. Any discussion or comment? Okay, Derek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And a yes, so it carries six zero. We will move on to policies. We have our second reading regarding our AI policy number 8636. And Bella did provide us student feedback on our policy. Is there any additional comments? We've seen this too many, so we can review it. Is there anything that you'd like to present on top of this? Okay, so we have this, we can digest it, and then hopefully bring the answers back before we go with the policy. Thank you very much. This is a very detailed response.
I got a copy of one. I don't want to copy it.
I want. I appreciate it.
Question I've got is, can this be tagged to some type of review? Because AI is changing so fast that we should be looking at it every year. Are we current? We need to make tweaks, especially with students' feedback that we keep looking at because it's going to be changing.
So actually, that was one of the comments that Bella had is how often will this policy be reviewed and updated to keep pace with technological advances and those stakeholders such as characters who will evolve in those regular meetings?
And they contribute part of the resolution that it forces us to look at it. Whether annually, and then we don't forget about it.
That's a comment.
It could be the top heading or something buried in the policy. As we say, we'll do what, then we forget about it. And maybe you want to put it on the docket for the organization in July.
I have some questions about the policy. Is it this? I'm not sure who to address the questions to though. So am I correct in interpreting this policy to read that we are putting the onus on the teachers to determine what sort of use of Gen AI will be allowed in their classrooms? That's what it seems to be reading. So every teacher could have different expectations that would need to be communicated to their class. Could a teacher of an advanced class have different expectations for their students than their regular class? Do AP kids get different standards? I mean, every, every teacher could have to do something different with the way the policy is written right now.
Just clarifying in terms of which, you say how it's used right now, what, what, what's, what area is being used in it?
I don't know how it's being used right now. I'm just saying that the way it's being, the way it's, the policy is written, it's saying that instructional staff must adhere by their expectations for student use of Gen AI. And the sentence before that, or the part number three says, "The board respects professional capacity of the instructional staff to assign work that is less susceptible to students. Gen AI can circumvent learning and allow multiple methods for students to demonstrate competence and understanding." So it sounds like we're, we're putting the onus on the teachers for saying, "You know how to do your job, and you know how to use AI effectively in your class, and you can set the rules for how it's being used." That's sort of how I agree this policy to be. And I think it's kind of, it's putting a lot of different power. You know, it's, it's the same power, but it's putting, each, each teacher could do something different with it, right? Because there's no oversight on those teachers. And I'm just kind of confused by how it's reading. That's how.
I would interpret it as former classroom teacher as being taught autonomy. Just like classroom instruction, there's a ton of teachers to be able to take the New York State standards and adopt the curriculum. And two teachers can deliver this, a lesson much differently depending on their professional opinions of how it should be delivered. We would be working right now, currently, the AI, we've held back on allowing some of the apps to request until the policy's in place. So in terms of being used right now, it's not been unleashed yet in the building, buildings. What we're looking to do is have a policy. And then teachers wouldn't just flow and just do whatever they wanted to do. So it's maybe working with our leadership team around some general guidelines for implementation and structure around it. But there would definitely be autonomy for professional time for teachers, which I do believe they should have in classroom. You know, there's teacher observations, there's still law for observations, there's oversight to that, and support most importantly as well. And if we need to provide professional development, we'll do that. I, for example, yesterday was an NISTIS conference. We spent a good afternoon working on a couple of really cool AI programs that we were taught. And I was planning a next cabinet meeting to show our cabinet team what those are and talk about potential uses that they could be sharing with staff as well. So what I see is if being a team member, and there will be some oversight to it, but I also have to be careful not to put such strict guardrails where teachers feel confined in terms of restricted to it as well. But to your point though, I mean, it just, it should be something just on federated, just go and do it, so to speak. So we're definitely going to work as a leadership team.
Well, that should be in there, that. It should be in there just saying that, you know, admin is going to be working with this, with the teachers on developing, you know, protocols or something. You know, like right now, it's just saying that, you know, we respect their professional capacity, which we do. But it's, it's putting the onus on the teachers, and that makes them fully responsible for the results, which, I mean, it's, I think everyone should be responsible for the results.
I don't want to speak for teachers, but I think if you flipped it around from the teacher's perspective, they'd probably say they prefer to have the autonomy that they're, looking at, I guess, in terms of it's an onus. I guess that word for onus, which to me is, you know, I'd be curious about how teachers' input would be to it as well.
Yeah.
Would they see it that way, or would it as responsibility, as falling on their shoulders? Or would they see it as gives them more flexibility? Because certainly, we could certainly adjust that language. But I do believe in terms of why it's written that way is to provide greater flexibility for people to use their professionals in the classroom and do so. And with that, we know that there would be oversight through the leadership, leadership team and support for it. But I would be happy to work and try to get more feedback from teachers. I think it's worthwhile to see how they felt about it, whether they felt like it's falling on their shoulders or they feel like they, they would prefer to have more flexibility to it.
I mean, I think that they absolutely need to be involved in that question. But like in number seven, it says employees may only utilize Gen AI tools if they have received express approval from their supervisor. So it's basically saying that teachers, right now, the way it's reading, it's saying teachers can do whatever they want, how they want to teach their, their students in terms of allowing them to use Gen AI. But if they want to use it as a tool themselves, they have to get permission from supervisors.
Well, I think that what that means and you can question one wrong kind is that they have to, they can't just go and start downloading a bunch of apps and allow students to download several apps onto their Chromebook without administration approval of those specific apps.
There's costs considerations, there's N2D compliance consideration as well. I know we're working with Ariel, Sherry and Alperty, there was a request for an app that teachers really wanted to utilize. We spent a lot of time already looking at it, and Ariel will probably tell you, I pumped the brakes big time on it. And as a leadership team, we've been, the whole meeting just discussing one program. We had a demonstration to it. I guess what I'm trying to say is there's a lot that goes into these decisions and being very thoughtful about them. It's not going to be something where that's meant to put some restrictions on somebody more and just going to be able to whatever they see, I want this, I want this. Ariel went to a recent training on a program with Lebanon that they were looking at, and we talked about afterwards, they know it's not for us. So that part is just to make sure that just because it's there, you can't just go and grab it and just bring to classroom. There may be some, some reasons why it's not good for, for kids.
Okay, so yeah, go ahead.
No, as I say, as well, you know, with our policy committee, which is looking at this, that's where the teacher input on that committee. Maybe we need to bring another teacher to, into that committee as well. I know Jody's on it, Dave's on it. It's definitely leadership heavy, but we certainly, between now and the next meeting, can look at what teacher input we have on that committee representation as well to get. Certainly, I'm not dismissing your comments at all, Rebecca, I'm just saying that I think that the language there, I weigh, I support how the teacher perspective, I know autonomy in classroom, what you teach and how you teach, there's some freedom there, and balancing that piece with the responsibility using correctly as well. So I think for the elementary level, for the middle school and high school, I'm sure we have some input there to see how they look at, at the language there. We can certainly modify it if it's not correct.
Yeah, and definitely looking at what Bella, all those questions too. I mean, she knows a lot of the same questions that I have, so.
Sure.
I feel like, I feel like the policy, she read the policy, I read the policy. I mean, kind of both in a way, it's, we don't think these questions are really adequately answered. This is a policy, like this is something that we're like going to be using. And yet, it's, it's got a lot, we have a lot of questions from this policy.
Sure. I haven't seen this, this is the first I've seen it, and our policy committee, no one has responded at all to the policy committee. So it's very, very hard. We come to the table, and then the table, now we have a discussion about it. In between, there's not any dialogue. So it's for us to be able to get this right for the board. I need to have that feedback along the way. So I think right now, if we can, working with Jody and Dave, and even Tom, is looking at the teacher representation and then saying, what's the feedback from the teachers, and even students there looking at this? Well, I haven't even read this yet, so.
Yeah, we just got it.
So, yeah, okay. I didn't know if it was all for this. I don't know, so.
Yeah, so I think in this time being, I think we should hold off and approve the second reading. We'll come back to these answers.
Yep.
And then in December, we can approve the second based on the answers and then the modifications, and then in November, January.
The only thing I would caution that's to clarify is that there are things that people are looking to start to utilize and ask for teachers, and holding back to Dan would try to tap in. And I'm not saying that's a question or something, but the longer we.
Roundtable?
The longer we take to approve the policy, the longer it takes people to be able to tap into the tools they want to use. So just hope with that in our arena as well, the more we get done between the meetings and have the reading. If we want to do a second read today and count it, we still have to approve it unless we come to the next meeting and say we have the ability to approve something if the work is done. I'm wanting to work in with the team and say, let's get the feedback.
That is a good idea. Yeah, if we can, we can approve it that way, and can still change it if we need traction, right?
And the Frank's point too, I completely agree with assessing it. It's, it's going to be changing and evolving. And, you know, we need to keep an eye out for the policy, make sure that it matches what, what's out there, what we're utilizing.
Is there something we can do in the meantime to start rolling it out? Because I think when you start rolling it out, you're going to have all of a sudden ironers, I need to change this, this and that. So is there something we can give this opportunity to start rolling it out and get some feedback of sample uses? And that could be also incorporated in our decision in December, approve the second reading. But start rolling out some aspects of it to get feedback if you need to tweak something else. So we get as close as possible in December. Like you said, you want the teachers to start rolling some things out to start some things.
Well, I'd love to get, bring feedback to the board for the next meeting. And that would be when you would, when you would be, yeah, December 12th, I can bring the actual feedback to the table. At least you can have that in front of you before they see what teachers, teacher inputs on that language there in particular. And sort of looking at what Bella has here for the student input. And then you got to try. If you want to try it for the, at the meeting, then we can, from there, then plan to adjust accordingly.
But you need to try stuff to really be certain as the path will go down.
Well, that's also why we can revisit it in, you know, in a year or two. We, you know, go through a semester of usage basically after December. We can revisit it even in the summertime.
Well, you know, if you start it and then you start the rework, that gives you July to do your first, August to do your second, and then September to do the third.
Right, which means the policy.
Yeah, we could even just include that in here, so we revisit it. That's what Frank's comment was, to do an annual.
Yeah, like not a year from now though, but like at the rework, which is.
Six months, seven months.
All right, six months, okay. Another just question. There's a lot of references to the education laws. But without me just knowing those laws, which I don't, or looking them up, which I don't have time to do, could we attach appendices at the end of this? Is to like, show us what those laws are that are being referenced? You know, law two, type M D, C policy. There's a lot of like references to other things in the input in these prescriptions section.
They're quite lengthy.
Are they? Yeah.
Yeah. Some I think we'd have to probably consult the internet and ask as well, like there was this sort of question. And N2D is one that I can, I can explain to you. We can talk more just in terms of privacy, the information that can't be shared. But there may be others that we just would have to, or just give the links.
Or, yeah, the links, exactly. Just give us the links or a quick summary of what that law is, and then a link or something. So you don't have to, you know, we, you know, we don't get bogged down with, you know, a huge.
E. B.
Exactly, but.
German.
Right.
Even though I was not reading, so that, so, you know, like that's the. Well, you read it, you don't understand it, it's your mind in German, it's your life.
Well, next to the background there, right on past.
I, I like it. This is the biggest one right now, dude.
Maybe links. We need links, please. I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
I'll make the motion for the second reading.
Okay, is there any other additional comment before we move forward with the motion? Okay, Frank made the motion for the second reading. Can I get second? For the motion. I'll second it. Second by Rebecca. Derek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And a yes as well. I just have to pick Kim first, if we're sitting on the policy committee and going through this whole process.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Rebecca.
Yeah, I actually got like the first half.
Sorry. We are moving forward to public comment for consent agenda items.
We have no public comments.
Public comment on the consent agenda. Okay, we will move forward to the consent agenda, which is A through J, with K being approval of the consent agenda items. I have just one comment to make on the items, but it doesn't require to be polled. Any other?
I have a comment too.
Is it just a comment, or you want to?
I have a question, yeah.
Pull it to vote separately.
Yeah, maybe just pull E.
E?
Surplus, okay. Pull E to discuss that separately.
Yeah, and then, is it in the audit report that had the extra classroom, so I? Okay, you want to pull this to vote separately? Yes, okay, should be quick. Do you want to just clarification, or do you want to vote separately? Maybe clarification. Okay. Before we vote? That's a great. Do you want to do clarification? Yeah. We can make the motion in second, and then we have the clarification, and then we can vote. Okay. Yeah, so can I get a motion for six, A through J, with K being the approval of the consent agenda?
Okay.
A second by Frank, or a motion by Frank is second?
Oh, second.
Second by Kim. Okay, we will move to discussion, the surplus. Yeah, what is it? And there's also like, I, what models, certain levels, what are we talking like?
Equipment, is it like what is it?
It is the telephones for middle school, high school, and the rural elementary. I think it's the old, like. Old phones. Oh, okay. If you look it up, it'll, it'll say telephone surplus.
There, there.
Oh, there it is.
The overall.
So all of that is just funds? Okay, that's all I need. And see that, that. Okay, okay, and then I is the external audit report. Yeah. So I just want to confirm that there is, I'm reading this correctly, that there is money left over from the class 2025, the amount of $3,700. That's a little more than that. And it's up, and this is basically recommendation, recommending for advising the board as to what to do with that money. So if you look at the corrective action plan, and you look down, you'll see inactive clubs. And you will see the comment with the corrective action. And Central Treasurer has responsibility to close that out, notify the board if there's any inactive or expiring clubs. Yep. And the board has to approve the transfer of those funds to a different club. Okay, so is that going to be, are we going to just create a, a policy moving forward that we will distribute, you know, any funds from inactive clubs to specific things? Or is it just produced every year? It's something that happens every year. Okay. Thing will, so essentially, this is through June, very end of 2025. So technically, that is still, this is the one club at that point. Yeah, and then we have to just, we have one club, we need to, which is that, that class designated to a different club. Do we need to do another extracurricular? We decide that though. When do we decide that? It says winter of 2026, so this winter will decide. Okay. Okay, so those get on the agenda, we'll just, okay. And is the Central Treasurer, Colleen, the Central Treasurer is your extracurricular, if you see that, your extracurricular? Okay, so it's not a person? It's, yeah, it is a person. It is Sherri Keller-Wilson. Okay. In the business halls. Okay. And so that answers that question. And then the other question was about sixth grade. Can I explain why the sixth grade clubs should be shut down? And we currently have clubs that are solely comprised of just sixth graders that are.
And we currently have clubs that are solely comprised of just sixth graders that are gonna be shut down.
I think, I think that has to do with the, with the club advisor. And it's specifically to sixth grade.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And I think what, if you, if it talks about it in the corrective action plan.
It doesn't say why. I don't know if it was a, you know, sort of.
Colleen probably would know better. She's not here tonight. So I guess they were, for table at the. I would've been answering that.
You don't even know if there are just clubs that are just sixth grade.
I think there's, there must be at least one, is it down here?
Yes.
Okay.
So we both think this is reporting to shut down this grade club. We don't know why.
We don't know why. It's recommended that be someone.
Club.
A wanted.
Okay. I don't believe it's a loss of the opportunity. It's not. I was gonna say, kids aren't losing anything. I definitely talked to Colleen about it in terms of, it's just the audit report that requires to do with the, the other one.
Okay, same compliance.
Okay.
If you shut it down, you can also bring it back. It's needed.
Okay.
It's not shut off and it's done for life. No, we can bring it back. Our recommendation is to put that back in, we can do it.
All right. So if you look in the corrective action, it actually says the central treasurer recommended to the board of education that any existing grade six public have been closed. It's ongoing and it actually states that the club is closed until summer 2025.
It already was closed.
It's already closed. All right.
So we're not bringing it in, aren't we, here? All right, that's it.
That is it. I, I actually do have a comment based on the audit. Um, two years ago, when we received our audit report, we had over four pages of recommendations from the business office that needed to be corrected. This audit, last year, they wrote it down to about half. This year, we were at one comment, which is four lines long. So good use to the business office. Which is, it was very nice to be in an audit and, um, not have our hands slapped. I guess is the next word. Okay, so we, any other comments? All right, so we are to the motion in second. Derek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Kim?
Bless you.
Yes. And I'm a yes, so six zero passes. Onto the president's report. Kind of echo what I just said, I would like to recognize the business office for their diligent work over the year and the results of their recent audit. Um, the business office is continuously improving and the latest audit indicates such. Tonight, the board voted to accept the resignation for retirement services from Sarah Grant, the district superintendent of buildings and grounds, even though he's not here. I would just like to congratulate him on his retirement and thank him for two decades of service that he has provided to our district. It was brought to my attention about a post on Facebook regarding a version of district offices and services between Berlin and New Lebanon. Um, normally, I do not entertain social media posts in this forum because the board provides those to the public the opportunity for public comment. However, I think it's important to recognize the foresight that this board did have. Um, when both New Lebanon and Berlin district would be undertaking recruitment and hiring our district superintendent, the previous board president, his friend, um, did reach out to Questar about sharing such position. At that time, New Lebanon did not desire to have any conversation regarding sharing the services in decline of the conversation with our district about such shared positions. So there was, I heard some romples on there and I found the post and, um, we did actually reject New Lebanon. Their loss, our name. And lastly, I'd like to encourage the public to review our district calendar and attend at least one of the events that highlights the diverse talents of our student body. And a perfect example was a jazz concert tonight. It was very, um, well-attended in my opinion and very entertaining. And finally, have a safe and healthy Thanksgiving. Superintendent's report.
Hey, Kate. Good evening, everyone. Um, a lot of great things continue to happen across the district. I'm gonna try to highlight as much as I can, echo a few things that Bella had said very well earlier. Uh, one is, I want to thank Mr. Gould, thanks Senator Ashby, uh, recognizing our Veterans Day. Uh, veterans who came into the, into the building and over 22, 23 veterans that were here. I want to continue to get those numbers higher in the future and collaborate with the community of our Veterans Day and so forth. Recognize them, thank them for their service to our country. Uh, it's just great to see that partnership, uh, here in Berlin. I've seen it in some other places, uh, and it's just wonderful to have here. So kudos to, to Mr. Gould for continuing that program, uh, to students who are involved as well. And look forward to seeing that continue. It's also a great partnership with the civic skill readiness as well. Uh, and those initiatives that align with new pathways for graduation. Uh, I also would like to recognize Ms. Karen Day. Uh, Bella mentioned National Irish Society, National Junior Irish Society. We had over 50 students that were recognized, uh, we can talk about here in the auditorium for academic excellence, scholarship, character, leadership, service. And that's just a credit to our students and also credit to our families as well. So congratulations to all those involved and thank you to Karen Day for recognizing that wonderful program for us. I want to congratulate the music program, although I don't have their names in front of me. We have two students who have qualified for all state competition this weekend, Friday and Saturday at Proctors. And that's a quite an accomplishment for those two students. So our music department should be very proud. Um, certainly, I am and the board is as well of those achievements. So kudos to that department. Um, I'd like to recognize also Sarah Grant, congratulate him on his retirement upcoming in April. And, uh, you know, he's been here for many years, uh, this district, a community member. And, uh, I enjoy working with Sarah and look forward to working with them next few months while I'm here. And there's a lot of knowledge of the district and it's been a big part of, of where we are today. And so I thank you very much for everything he continues to do for us and, uh, congratulate him on his, on his retirement. Um, I also want to mention facilities, a couple of things that are happening currently tied into Mr. Grant's department. Uh, one is that we recently, uh, just completed upgrades to the swipe badge system at the elementary school. Uh, I know it's Gataldo and that much features are appreciative of the fact our swipe badge does now work. Next time we get around to be able to board, be able to get the building. Uh, the front door was completely broken, had been replaced, uh, but it's a new system that Dave Automation has installed. Uh, working through our Smart Schools Bond Act to pay for that. We're also gonna be updating our camera systems as well with, uh, Smart Schools Bond money from the state. Um, so looking forward to that, those upgrades. We also, that much, that much school are in the middle of the Capitol Outlet project. North Portico roof is being repaired. The project has started. Um, hopeful that this next week, we're gonna really get finished with the project before weather changes. But that roof is, is gonna be repaired. Already has a new, uh, rubber roofing on it and there's more work to be done. That should be happening very, very quickly, uh, to bring that up to standard where it should be as well for students and our faculty. Uh, I also would like to, uh, congratulate the business office. The audit report was outstanding. Um, thank Mr. Prusur for coming in earlier to share that with us. And the only one comment on there is truly remarkable achievement that things are going the right direction financially for our district. And to further that point, uh, currently, this is the week of the State ASBO Conference, which is the school business official conference up in Saratoga. Uh, the entire business office is up there. And a big reason why they're all there is because today they received a collaborative award of excellence for the Berlin Central School District. Uh, according to ASBO, the newly formed team from Berlin has rebuilt trust, transparency, and stability in the district, established sound financial perceived processes, ensured compliance, and brought professionalism and purpose to their work. I'm very proud of each and every one of them as my colleagues and proud of the direction the district is going from a financial standpoint as well. So congratulate the business office on that found accomplishment and that award as well. And that is it for this update. I'm looking forward to next month. Uh, we're gonna have a lot of things exciting happening here in December. It gets busy. And wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We will move on to administrative snapshots, the business office.
Business is not updated today?
There's not an update in their effort.
I do have transportation and I have facility as well.
Okay, perfect. Uh, PPS and MTSS.
So currently working to fill a number of positions within the department, including the CSE secretary position. It's a key role, especially as we are gearing up for annual reviews. Um, and while it is a challenge to have that change mid-year, it is certainly a granted some opportunity to kind of adjust some of our processes and review things that have become, you know, routine and give us a chance to look more closely at it. And you want to thank the board for approving the creation of the point four speech position. It is going to be a challenging position to fill, but it will give our speech providers a much-needed, much-needed support as they are every single minute of the day working with kids. It's truly impressive to see them run around the building and active in as many sessions as they do. I know that they will appreciate that additional support as well. I did have an interview with a candidate who had recently retired, but unfortunately, she might not be able to take on that much of a position right now. But she did refer a number of her friends who are also retiring. So here's hoping that we can find somebody in that role. And again, we're working hard to lay some groundwork for another successful annual review process. It is quite the project to get up and running. Um, I feel like I talk about it every single time I talk with you guys, so, uh, it is quite involved. Also just wanted to share that we've been continuing to collaborate within the P E committee about some of our focus areas on curriculum development and some really great conversations, uh, going on there about what we need to prioritize and what we need to focus on and what our next steps are. So I'm really excited to have conversations about long-term growth as well. I think we get caught up in some of our short-term pieces sometimes. So also wanna kudos to Kenny for bringing those long-term conversations to the leadership team in Cat. It is, I think those are some important, long-term thinking to have about where we wanna be and how we're gonna get there best, so. A lot of great, a lot of great discussion going on and I look forward to continuing that work with the committee.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a few updates. So MTSS, the meetings have been going really, really well, um, in both buildings. And we are seeing some really good student growth and gains towards our goals. Um, looking forward, I'm going to be setting up the winter IXL diagnostic, where hopefully we can continue to see, um, the student growth. But when I'm tracking some of my MTSS students, they're already growing from the fall diagnostic when we're using IXL. So we're just really excited to see what the kids are doing right now.
I actually have a question. You know, how you said they grow out of the programs of level two to level one? Does that happen in January after they take the IXL exam or does that have, it's a continuous process?
So the student can be exited through MTSS from like tier two to three or two to one at any time, as long as they're making that proper growth and hitting like those grade level goals and hitting their MTSS goals. So it's not necessarily that we have to wait for the diagnostic. It can be done at any MTSS meeting that I have hold with the grade level team and the providers, um, when we look at how the students are doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Transportation, you're gonna provide.
Oh, yep. Yep. Um, so Jeanette says that things are going well in transportation. Start winter sports shuttle back up this Monday with games following in the coming weeks. She's happy to report that Rick just completed step one of training for his SBDI, school bus driver instructor certification today. In fact, Jeanette's been without Rick for a couple of days due to training, uh, she's very busy. Uh, Rick is gonna be, uh, able to move on to his 19A certification in December. This will enable him to help annually and bi-annual staff training mandated by SED and New York State DMV for drivers and attendants. She also reports that for the first time ever, everyone in transportation partook in CPR training on the superintendent's conference day last week on the 10th. This included drivers, attendants, mechanics, and Jeanette herself. So we are all officially CPR certified to further increase safety standards on school buses as well as our department. And she wishes all a happy Thanksgiving with her fans.
Very good. Go through some graphs.
Uh, so Mr. Grant, uh, who was ill today, uh, he shared that he met with, uh, John Lesko. Uh, John Lesko is from the Grommet Company. Uh, I'll provide an update to the board a little later on about this. But essentially, right now, we're looking at the roof of the elementary school for repairs. We've run into some hiccups finding, uh, a company to come in and be able to repair the roof. So John Lesko was nice enough to lend his expertise and take a look at it for us. He's recommended by Questar. Uh, he came on Monday very quickly. Uh, he does report there is a minimal of 40 to 50 shingles on that roof right now. Minimumly that will need to be repaired. And that the age of the roof is approaching 100 years old. Uh, it's about 90 plus years old and those slight shingles have a lifespan of about 100 years. What happens is they do thin out and may fall off the roof. So we have to consider, uh, patching the roof and repairing what's broken there or potentially really consider whether that the whole roof, um, should be replaced. Because at a lifetime point now, even for repair, we're talking about four, five, 40 years possibly uh, in terms of the length of that roof right now. And there are some significant, uh, slate shingles that are missing off that with holes up there that are visible from the inside of the building as well, which is likely why the water is coming, coming in the building. That and the clock tower is in a state of, as he describes, um, needing serious repair at this point in time. Uh, and that's also gonna tie into the water issues in the building. It's not taken care of that we're gonna produce water leak in the classrooms, other parts of the building. So there's some serious facilities issues when it comes to BES, getting that up to standard. Uh, repairs and bringing it up to speed where it needs to be with, with the roof, uh, in that facility. So those are, I've got discussions we have to have as a district in terms of how we wanna allocate things short-term and long-term to, to take care of that. Uh, there was also an incident at the, uh, BES recently where an individual ran the fence that was just installed in the back of the building with the alternate vehicle. Um, the fence was damaged and, uh, right now, Sarah reports that claim has been filed. Uh, photos have been shared against the individuals, individuals' insurance. And we are, um, what are we looking at? Repairing that fence and looking at, uh, you know, how we wanna place the fence when it's repaired. That's the process right now. And lastly, Sarah reports, uh, positively that the drinking water results are back and every fixture did pass except for one sink in the Mills School High School bathroom. And it's been labeled installed, but that is not for drinking use at this point in time um, due to the drinking water test results that came back. This is at the Mills School High School, the one, uh, in the one back.
Thank you. Technology?
Just a couple of things to point out as I normally have to. High number of Chromebook damages to the degree this year that students are actually punching them. They're carving the casings of them. They're taking the backs apart during school, during classes, believe it or not. And they're cutting the wires inside the computers and removing even the speakers out of them. So I do have a meeting next Monday with admin team to discuss how we're gonna move forward with these type of damages. They're on the call for and it's very difficult for us to collect money back from these parents. Uh, we also have approximately eight to 12 Chromebooks right now that have been lost, stolen, misplaced, whatever, the students can't seem to find them. And that includes when the students don't have their devices, I let out loner devices. I have about 12 loner devices available every single day. With the volume of missing devices, that's depleted my supply, but even my tech loner devices have now been lost. So it's, it's becoming an increasing problem and I think that we really need to come up with a plan of how we move forward with these one-to-one devices. There's no respect for them at this point. A lot of severe damages. I am fortunate, as I've said before, when we surplus equipment because it's not functioning anymore, but I can salvage like screens and things like that. I do remove those screens to replace any of the devices that have broken screens to try to cut costs. But we're getting into where keyboards are being picked apart, even the facing on the keyboards are being destroyed. It, it's just astronomical. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Um, to follow up with Mr. Rizzo's comment about the bureaucratic control access down at Berlin Elementary. I believe that the FOB readers are working. Is that correct? Yes, but the actual unlocking of the door schedule is not working. I was not aware of that.